Alright, if everybody's ready, we're gonna bring the meeting to order at six P M. Do you guys want to introduce yourselves and your long new faces tonight? I'll start with you.
I'm Chris McDonald.
I'm Stollin Brooks.
Jennifer Mitchell.
Johnny Chesley.
Jake Stanham.
This is Jan, our meeting ticker.
Jan.
Minute ticker. Alright, roll call, everybody except Roseanne is here. And reading out the minutes.
What's your talk, Seth?
Um, did we have one thing needed to add to it was the...
Fire truck.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Very good.
Scored it.
Alright. Um, all in favor? Announcements, nomination papers are available for select board, school board, and cemetery trustee. They must be returned by January sixteenth. Do we have any public comment? Jason?
Yep. Good evening, thank you for your time. My name's Jason Elko. Many things here in town, but most important to me is that I'm a father, husband, and grandfather, son-in-law, two fellow residents, citizens, and taxpayers here in the town of Corinth. I'm also proud to be a member of the Corinth Fire Department since two thousand and eight. Times are changing, changing. If, in my professional life, I'm a data coordinator for the State of May Bureau of Emergency Medical Services, and I've provided countless guidance to this select board and to the fire department that has been very forthcoming. To say I'm disappointed with recent events is to say the least. Misinformation shared on social media recently has caused quite the stir. I was never scared about the future of EMS in Corinth, nor have I ever been scared about whether or not an ambulance would be there for me or my failing when one is needed. The Corinth Fire Department's intention of our post that was regarding getting the best bang for your buck was one hundred percent intended to draw attendance here to this meeting because legislating the future of EMS in Corinth on Facebook is not the right answer. However, participating in local government is where real change happens. Unfortunately, after reading the posts and comments, I am more scared now than ever. Not about if an ambulance would be available, but if these posts and comments by a few select board members, their families, and the general public would scare other people. Like to talk a minute about transparency. Several meetings ago, I suggested to this select board to invest ARPA funds in transparency. That certainly rattled a few of you because I received several questions outside of the meeting regarding why I was bringing that up. The responses to my request for transparency were not met with one hundred percent acceptance. A few of you are opposed to being recorded. One of you even suggested nobody would hear anything because none of you would talk because you didn't want people to hear what you're saying. Quite honestly, that is exactly why I was suggesting recording these meetings. All I need to refer you to is the December twelfth, twenty twenty-four meeting. There was a section in the minutes regarding the discussion of ARPA funds. The minutes say discussed. They were discussed. The select board voted to spend seven thousand dollars on recreation equipment, storage, bleachers, and picnic tables, four thousand dollars to repair a fire truck pump, twenty thousand dollars on town of office door replacements, nine thousand one hundred eighty-four dollars on town office improvements, and one thousand forty-five dollars on a camera for the conference room so we could record these meetings. We haven't bought that camera yet, because I think we're waiting on a sales tax exemption certificate. We'll talk a second about response times. When we took over coverage here in town, Corinth Fire Department established a policy regarding response times. The policy states that we have to be ready to be anywhere in the town within fifteen minutes ninety percent of the time. Few, few topics, few items on that. Response time is measured from when the department is notified of the call from dispatch to when we arrive on the scene. Response time is an important factor considered when planning an EMS system for patients experiencing time-sensitive illnesses such as chest pain, shortness of breath, trauma, or stroke, but is not always the most important factor. Want to talk about strategic planning? See comments about that. Select board voted at a select board meeting, put me in charge of an EMS strategic planning committee. Purpose of this committee is to research creative alternatives to the EMS challenges we are facing. We are working with a consultant from Penosquaw County on a regionalization project that would put everything on the table for three communities to combine three to fire, three fire departments into one regionalized service, offering fire and EMS coverage to ninety-three hundred residents in Corinth, Kanduske, and Glenburn. While this would be a dramatic change in how we are currently doing things, it is a solution that would increase the level of service being offered and improve the quality of the service for each, each of the three communities. Currently, very early, an annual operating budget for this project is being discussed and is in the two point six to two point eight million dollar a year price range, which is a shocking number. A budget such as that would be managed by a quasi-municipal entity whose sole purpose would be to manage the fire and EMS protection of those three communities. The plan would provide one full-time fire chief, two ambulances staffed twenty-four hours a day, every day, at the station, and a twenty-four-hour shift officer. And that would spread the burden over three communities, so it's not per community, it's for all three.
Did you give us a quote of one point two for this town?
For one ambulance staffed twenty-four hours a day, it'd be about one point two million dollars.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Let me make sure.
Want to talk about Northern Light Mayo EMS? Mayo EMS is our partner, and we still need to be good partners with them. The fire department's concern with Mayo EMS was that they left our community. The reason they gave when they left was a lack of staffing. To date, we are unaware that they have resolved that staffing issue. As you may recall, when they took the angle side of Corinth, they did not continue to staff it at a different base. They do over five thousand calls a year over a very large area with three ambulances. Mayo is still simultaneously paged to Corinth on every call. We cancel them as soon as possible. This is their choice of how they manage their response for their agency. There have been several instances over the past several months where they have not had a unit to send to Corinth. This was not an issue because the Corinth Fire Department is covering. However, there, there is no promise of a response. We have no contract with Northern Light. We are thirty days away from them placing an ad in the newspaper and removing Corinth as one of their, one of their covered towns. We, we were not in favor of renting a clinician from Mayo, as was stated, for several reasons. Number one, Mayo never said that they would do it. They weren't even asked.
That, that wasn't what that option ended up being.
I know, but...
So...
Those were your comments. You said we were opposed to it. We didn't want anything to do with Mayo. They were never asked.
They were asked.
No, they weren't. If we were going to change from the current model to renting, to a renting EMS clinician model, why would we not utilize the men and women of Corinth Fire Department to do so?
That is exactly what that option is. So why are you saying it differently than what it is?
Because you said it differently on Facebook, Jen, that's what, that's exactly why. You said it differently on Facebook. You said we were opposed to bringing Mayo in, and I'm telling you why we were opposed to bringing Mayo in. That was discussed at the budget committee meeting and...
You guys were opposed to the forty hours.
We're opposed to both of those options, to be quite honest.
Because?
Because they're not what's best for the town.
In what way?
Not having staffing twenty-four hours a day here in town isn't the best option for the town.
We absolutely could have staffed.
You don't know that.
The forty hours, well, right now, what we're dealing with is ten percent of what's being paid out is actual calls.
So that's, that's a great point, however...
It is a very good point. Because we have a lot of citizens in the community that can't stand that tax hike.
That's okay. All we're asking you to do is put it to a vote for the citizens to say that they don't want to stand that, they don't want that tax hike. What I would say, though, is that there's a cost to readiness. And that cost of readiness is paying staff to work. You can't ask staff to work and not offer them compensation to, to be ready to work.
But that isn't true. That, that isn't, across the board, that is not how life works.
EMS, EMS is not a hobby. EMS is a profession.
And, and that is fine, okay? But you can't look at me and say it's all about money when it's all about money with you guys.
It is not all, if it was all about money, we wouldn't be doing it for fifteen dollars an hour.
You're saying to me that you were used to do it because of the money. Then you're looking at me and saying, I don't care, I'm a cold-blooded killer because I don't care if everybody's gonna die because it's about the money. One cannot be true and the other not.
Well, I never said you were a cold-blooded killer. I never said about anything...
You said everybody's going to die.
I never said that. Nope, we never said everybody's gonna die.
Yes, absolutely, you did several times.
No, no, we, we did not.
Okay? The problem is, we cannot pay for something that we can't afford, okay? We're asking you to meet us part of the way. That's what we're asking. We're not saying we're never gonna pay you. We're not saying we want you to work for free. We're asking you to look at the budget. We have a full-time fire chief, okay? That would take away one person for fifty hours a week. Well, you're saying no, Mark, but tha- that's part of it. That's part of the cost.
You gotta remember the talk we had, is what I s... Part of the deal, you hired me.
And I understand that. Our needs have changed.
Well, don't change things now.
Well, of course, I can change things now.
No, I can change things too.
I agree, and I understand that.
I have a verbal agreement with two or three of you when you hired me, how that would be, and you know for a fact what it is, so don't stop that.
Okay, but the job changed.
Say what?
It's very recording.
Yep, I recorded, yeah.
That's fine, that's fine.
Okay.
But the job changed because our needs changed, and just like in my position...
Not my fault.
It's not my fault either.
No.
It isn't. So if the needs change for the town, we have to change the job description. I understand if that isn't something you want to do, I do. It is a different need. It is something we have to discuss because that seventy thousand dollars for a full-time fire chief, when how many fires do we have a year?
That's...
Our ambulance is what...
That's like minute.
Right. Our ambulance is what we have needs of. That is by far, the EMS side is what we have needs of. If we were to stipend the fire chief like the other towns and had a part-time EMS director or a full-time, those things would take away the tax burden on the citizens. That's what I'm asking from you guys. When we ask for options, we're asking for you to meet us partway. We cannot afford the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. We can't do it.
All we're asking is for you to let the town vote on that.
That's right.
Okay.
That's it.
The town elects us to make the decisions on what the budget looks and what we can afford, okay? We have so much more information than most people do, okay? As far as the misinformation, that was the other question. What is the misinformation that was put on Facebook?
So, I'm not on Facebook. I'm living vicariously through the posts that people share with me and screenshots and images of it. There, there, you're not gonna be able to deny that there's misinformation out there on Facebook.
Okay, but what's the misinformation? What, what am I incorrectly putting? Because it's me, it's not...
Oh, I didn't say you. I didn't say you.
But it is me.
I didn't say you.
So I wa- I am asking, is there something I'm misunderstanding that I'm putting out there?
I think you should stop quoting statistics for the fire department. I think that when we post, when we post, when we posted... Well, you asked me a question and I'm talking and you're gonna interrupt me.
Okay.
Right?
Yep, you're right.
So I can't answer your question if you talk over me.
You are correct.
So, when we're putting out there that people should come and participate in town government to come to the select board meeting so that their voice could be heard here, and you're, and you're saying that we're lying to people and that it's only the, only the firefighters and their families that are interested in this becoming, becoming a reality, that is misinformation.
No, actually, this board has gotten so many people that said, please, we can't afford it, don't do it.
Well, I will tell you, there's people that talk to me as well that say the same thing. Not, but the opposite, right? They say to me, we hope you, we hope you guys get this, right? Because I don't want to wait for an ambulance to come from Dover, Foxcroft, to take care of my family. And all the plans that are on the table right now are kind of, you know, piecemeal plans that are ideas, they're concepts of a plan. They're not even real, really thought-out plans.
So, with that, you guys are using scare tactics. You are terrifying the citizens of this town.
What are we saying that's terrifying anyone?
Okay, you are saying that there's going to be no coverage. That is not at all ever happened.
When, when, when did we say that? When, when did we say that there would be no coverage?
We have repeatedly said, if you guys aren't there, then there won't be an ambulance.
There, there, that might be a reality.
I might? Yes, it might, and tomorrow I might wake up size two. The whole reality is, we have to go on what we have in front of us. We have to look at the data. We have to look at what we're being told. We can't go on what might happen or what could happen.
Well, I would say that the data would tell you that if we're not, if we weren't here at least two times last week, that there wouldn't have been an ambulance that came from Mayo to come here. And so they would have had to take an ambulance from somewhere else. And then the next one that they're gonna get is maybe from, maybe from Bangor. And they don't know, they don't know where it's gonna come from. We don't have mutual aid agreements with anyone. Northern Light Mayo doesn't have mutual aid agreements with anyone. And Northern Light Bangor has very few mutual aid agreements with her, with agencies on the other side of the Penosquaw River. This is reality, Jenny. You should listen to the subject matter experts on this, and those are the members of the fire department, not the opinion. You can listen to the people that talk to, talk to us on that one.
But what I'm saying to you is, I know that there is a chance that could happen. What I have to do is I have to do what's best for everybody and what the citizens need, okay? There was so many that were distraught over the last tax hike, okay? When I am looking at the call log and ten percent is actual calls, okay? I can't validate when someone asks me, are we getting what we need, okay? What we are over-insured is what this amounts to. To have twenty-four seven, we're over-insured. And I can't validate that amount of money being spent to the citizens who, it's their money that's being spent.
Maybe you can't, but you have a voice when you vote, but other people can't. And they spoke, the town spoke. Now granted, in October, when we had the special town meeting, the town spoke overwhelmingly to approve that money to, to pay for EMS.
And...
And that didn't cost, didn't cost them a dollar.
None of you explained to them that for over a year Mayo had been covering us, that they weren't in that station, okay? You made it sound like when they left, we had nothing and, and that we had been covered before that. We were not. There was between twelve and twenty-two days, every single month, there was nobody there. In fact, on the day that I had the issue that you had to come and you saved Aaron, on that day, they had trouble finding a driver. And on that day, our, our Corinth was in charge of the driver at that point, okay? That's what I'm saying, is there's lots of things that could happen. But I have to justify an enormous amount of money. And what I'm asking from you guys is to meet us part of the way. And that's what I'm not getting back. You're telling me that's not an option, that's not an option, and the only option is that it's huge money. And I can't, they, they will not go for it.
What you're asking us to do is to volunteer, essentially.
No, I will pay you the higher rate for the job that's done.
For when we go on a call. When we go on a call.
Most nights, there's quite a few of you that sleep in this town, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, those nights, you know, there's a way to do it. But what you're saying to me is all about the money, but it's really all about the money to you.
If it was about the money to me, I wouldn't be doing it for fifteen dollars an hour. I guarantee you that. If it was about, I made more money when I worked for Mayo doing it than I, than I get here.
Okay, were you at home when you worked for Mayo?
During, at night, yeah.
When you worked for Mayo, you were paid what pers- what hourly, and you were home?
Uh, when I was home, I could make up to twenty dollars an hour.
And if you were on for Mayo, how many calls a night and how many areas did you cover?
I, I don't know how many calls a night that I did, but I could go anywhere and they're covered, right?
Exactly.
Yep.
But here, it's just Corinth. You are just covering Corinth. And that's the part that I'm saying to you, is that you're in your own home. I get that it's not ideal. I get that it's not the going wage. What I'm asking from you guys is, we need a certain amount of you meet us partway. We can't do the three eighty-seven, we have repeatedly said. The budget committee told you. We know the numbers, we can see it, okay? And so then the attacks started. And that's where the problem lies, okay? We're not here, us versus you, that's not what we're here. We're here for this entire town. We're here for the entire community. We're trying to get the community covered. But we can't have them unable to eat because they have to pay this tax bill. But we can't have property liens on places because they can't pay the tax bill. That can't happen. Did you have anything else?
I don't, no, I read my comments.
Did anybody else have anything they wanted to say? Did you guys want to add anything?
You can cover it all.
Actually, I do have something. Um, so at the last town meeting, my, or no, it was the budget committee workshop that I attended, um, and my understanding was there, it was kind of narrowed down to the two options, and the fire department was walking out of here to bring that back to their staff to ask, what, what do we think about those two options? So, from what I'm hearing tonight, is, are, like, is the fire department saying no to those two options?
I, I don't, I don't have the results of that poll, but to be quite honest with you...
Those results were supposed to be brought here tonight.
Well, I didn't conduct the poll, and I could, to be quite honest with you, that's a gotcha poll, right? Are you willing?
No, the question was...
Are you willing to do one of these two options? Yes or no?
And what are your thoughts on the two options?
That, that night, Roseanne had stated that, um, are you doing it for money or are you doing it for community service? And quite honestly, it, at fifteen bucks an hour, I'm doing it for community service, right? But the, the poll asking that question, if you're willing to do it, yes or no, whichever way you answer it, if you do it for yes, then you're, you're not gonna cover the community the way that we feel is the best coverage for the community. But if you answer it no, then we're not, we're not willing to provide community service. It's a gotcha poll, either which way you look at it.
I didn't see it as a yes or no poll, but that's fine. There's no results from the question. I mean, that was how we left the workshop that night.
I don't know if they have the results for the poll. I voted no on both options myself personally. I know I spoke to several other people who voted no, but I don't, I don't have the results of the poll.
I don't have it either, but a lot of them didn't like it, either one of them.
So, do you have a suggestion how it would make it better? Is there something between, um, what we are saying and what you're saying? Is there something between that would work?
I think, I, to be quite honest with you, the price that is on the table is a Band-Aid price. It's not a, it's not a recruitment rate at fifteen dollars an hour and twenty dollars an hour when you're on a call. It's not a recruitment rate. You're not gonna get people to come into the department to work for that. Any more people that are already here to come in and work for that. You're not gonna get any more people to come and work at the department saying, we're gonna, we're not gonna pay you except for when you're on a call, uh, to do fire and EMS coverage in the community. And it's not even a retention rate to say, hey, this is, this is how much you're gonna make for that. So, I think the regionalization project that we're working on, to get to the next, to the next level, where we could say, we're gonna spread this tax burden across three communities and have full-time coverage in the house twenty-four hours a day rather than at home.
When you quoted that, you said that would go up to one point two, that it wouldn't be...
Yeah, that would be, if we were gonna, gonna do it here to staff one ambulance to pay you down...
No, with the regionalization, regionalization, you said it would be one point two per town.
No, I never said that.
It's by, by capital, and blums get five thousand.
Okay.
We get three.
So one point two is just us?
One point two million, because I want to be very clear. One point two million dollars gets you, gets you one ambulance staffed twenty-four hours a day in one station. That's all that, that's all that gets us.
And so, if we were gonna do it ourselves, full-time, that's what you're saying?
That, that's what that would be.
It's one point two million.
It's almost not worth it to do that for one community, though. Because if you, for five hundred calls a year that we do here in town, the, between four and five hundred calls a year that we do here in town, it, that's, that's a big burden to bite off for this community. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend doing that. But when you spread the cost over three communities, you get a lot more bang for that buck because you're not only taking into consideration the payroll factor of it, you're taking into consideration of that, well, Glenburn has three pieces of fire apparatus, Kanduske has several, Corinth has several, and we have five sets of jaws between us, and we have, you know, thirty different air packs between us. And now, when one set of jaws breaks down, we don't need to replace that because we've got four more, right? When one engine breaks down...
So that's one ladder truck, like, okay.
Yeah, when one engine breaks down and we need to get the comfort gear...
So, how many calls did you guys do in November?
Thirty-four.
Alright, and in December?
Thirty-two, I believe. Thirty-five, sorry.
Thirty-five total. Because it was listed on there that there was a hundred and twenty-one.
Yeah, so there was a, in all transparency, November said sixty...
Yeah, and so that's what I was trying to see if that was misinformation, because I was like, that wasn't...
November, November, well, it, it, it was a, it was a, um, it was a wholehearted attempt to be transparent, to show our numbers. Um, apparently, there's not thirty-one days in November, and a computer doesn't really know what to do when you tell it there might be thirty-one days in November, so... Uh, that number reported that day was sixty-eight. That was from the day that that report was run, run from November first to whatever day in January it was. And when we caught that, we, I think there's a correction post out there now for that.
Yes.
The regionalization, I'm, I'm, I'm the same thing that Jason is, and I think that's gonna have to go that way simply for the fact that five trucks, eight hundred thousand dollars down for the cheapie. And, you know, when you start figuring that in, that goes a long ways to help fund EMS.
Well, and I think with the fire, too, we don't have as many people in town during the day. If we have a fire and they can come from those other towns, if we regionalize that way, that would be a plus.
I think, I don't think this can be a choice, my answer to that is.
Right. And what are you thinking the timeline on that? We talked about it a couple of times.
Uh, well, I'm, it all depends on how quick the towns are willing to act because the, you know, you're hearing about it really for the first time for me tonight. I've shared, you know, a few reports with you in the past, but Stuart's been to a few of the meetings and he's seen... He's, yeah, he's been to all, there's only been three, but he seems pretty excited about it. Quite honestly, I think his excitement is part of the driving force between the other communities wanting to participate in it. But, uh, I'm hopeful that maybe at the March of twenty twenty-sixth town meeting, the town could vote to say, yes, go forth and do this. The, we're working with that consultant from Penosquaw County who's, um, uh, we're applying for a grant to help fund that fairly soon, that the county's gonna facilitate for us. And, um, it's just, and they're, and they'll also provide legal assistance to us, like building out the entity communicating to the town and communicating to the stakeholders in the other communities to sell the, quite honestly, sell the idea to the community, um, that this is a good idea. So, I'm hopeful that at the March of twenty-sixth town meeting, the town can vote on that. And all the towns can vote on it. All the towns meet in March for all their town meetings, so that is, that is my hope, right there.
What would the town of Corinth be paying for that regionalization?
Well, if the budget is, if, if the budget was two point eight million, right? And there was ninety-three hundred citizens, and you just divided that between the ninety-three hundred.
No, Spivey and Glenburn, and what would you say two in Kanduske, right?
I think they're...
Seventeen hundred, seventeen hundred.
Seventeen hundred, yeah. I'm, and, um, my...
Don't worry here.
Yeah. My, um, my estimate is that it'd be about three hundred and two dollars per capita. And if, if that budget that happened here for, um, that, that budget that's proposed here, that's just shy of six hundred thousand dollars for the fire department...
Nine hundred and six thousand.
That's about two hundred dollars per capita. So it would be an increase of a hundred dollars per capita over that proposed budget, but you would get a full-time fire chief and five full-time staff on twenty-four hours a day at the station. So, you could fill the seats of the fire apparatus, and you wouldn't have to worry about being that second EMS call, um, because there wouldn't be.
How about more communities being involved?
We're, we're.
Like Bradford and Hudson and Charleston.
We've, we've, so this consultant has reached out to every single community in the county, um, and he's only heard that from a few.
Charleston is looking to hear, they have heard nothing yet.
They haven't heard anything yet, um, but we're, where we started this on our, we started this with these three communities, the advice from the consultant right now is, um, to proceed with these three communities, but leave room in the planning for future expansion of that. So if Charleston wanted to come on, Bradford wanted to come on, or Hudson, uh, wanted to come on, that we could flex to include them in that conversation.
Problem is you get too many people involved, get too many different opinions, and you don't really get any follow motion.
So here's a question, I know it's in the very, um, beginning process, but we have a lot of equipment, and we have a lot of people. How does that play into when you go into those other communities? Because neither one of those communities have anywhere near the equipment or people that we have. How does that play into it?
So.
Any ideas?
In the, in the reality of this situation, all of the, all of the assets of each department would become the assets of the quasi municipal entity. And that entity would be responsible for the maintenance of it and for the, um, upkeep and replacement schedules for that equipment.
But you might not have three five trucks devices, you might only have two.
Right.
We probably have an ambulance here with two people on, and Glenburn, Kanduske would not. They have, what do they call it, like, the, the first responder vehicle.
They have a first responder vehicle.
Yeah, you sound, just give that first aid.
One, one important factor in this too, is this is like really important to the people that are involved with it, with it. Um, all the chiefs have been great in this conversation, because when we started this, quite honestly, the conversation was, the chiefs are gonna be the problem. Uh, because who's gonna be in charge, and whose name's gonna be on the side of the truck? Um, none of them have been that way with this, they've all been super open to the conversation and willing to participate. Um, that, that, that piece is the biggest challenge, though. Um, and Glenburn has the facilities that we could staff that right now, we have the facilities we can staff it right now. Kanduske, they don't really have the facilities to staff it, but, um.
Have no one coming.
In, in, in like, in like three years potentially, so.
Go ahead.
Well, how would the town pay if they can't pay for three hundred eighty-eight thousand?
How can they pay for nine hundred and six?
I mean, they pay for one hundred thousand, I mean, that would make the delivery drop at least nine.
Well, if, like I said, if this budget was six hundred thousand dollars, it wouldn't be nine hundred and six thousand, it would be, it would be an extra hundred dollars per capita. I mean, it'd still be nine hundred and six thousand dollars, but the increase from service, going from six hundred to nine hundred, the increase in the level of service is exponential as to what you're, you're, you're paying for versus what you're getting.
I would just point out though, you said per capita, so that means that we, as we know, there's three thousand capable in this town, there's eighteen hundred tax bills and thirteen hundred tax bills.
Right, it's not.
So it's not, it's not really per capita.
And a bill isn't sent per capita.
I get that, I totally get that, we only use that.
I don't send it to each person, we only send it to the property owners. So that is only divided over thirteen hundred unique people.
So the other, the other piece of the conversation is, we know when you apply for things as a group, like grants, like safer grants, like AFG grants, that when you're a part of a group, those grants are more likely to come through. We've been super successful in our grant writing here in town, um, other municipalities have been super successful in that as well. Those safer grants that are, that are for staffing, uh, to pay for staffing.
But with the safer grant, and that's another thing that a lot of people don't understand, at first they pay. But in the end, the town has to pick up the one hundred percent of that cost.
Absolutely.
And that's the part, you know, people will come to me and say, well, we can do this, well, that works great in the beginning, but the problem is, is once you have it, then you have to pay for it. The town has to pay for it.
Yep, nothing's for free.
So, right, and that, just, just on that note, I just wanna make sure, because that's something that a lot of people ask.
Absolutely. Grants are, grants are fantastic, but they're, you know, one of the challenges with the grants is sustainability. And because if you apply for a grant and you get ten free air packs out of that grant, that's fantastic, but in a few years, you gotta replace the batteries on them, you gotta buy new regulators, new masks, change the bottles, hydro test the bottles, do all that stuff, and the grants don't pay for that, they just buy the product. You've gotta come up with that money for that yourself, we under- we understand that, we get that.
Well, and I, I know you do, I just wanted to make sure, because a lot of people don't understand, I think, oh, we have this grant, free money, we got this, but in the end, it's all coming back to be paid for by the citizens of this town.
But the point that Jason made, the fact that grants are pretty free right now, but as we've been kind of led to believe that that's gonna stop. So if they can help three communities with a piece of equipment already granted, or whatever, instead of just one.
Instead of one, yeah.
And, and, hey, the county and everybody else's money is drying up, that's the whole point, money is getting more scarce, but that's why I believe in regionalization, but the town in Corinth did it when it built the new station. We thought it was gonna happen way back then, because the county was gonna force it, it never happened. Remember that?
Yeah.
My other question was on the ARPA, you said that, um, it wasn't in the notes on the ARPA funds that we discussed.
So in the minutes, it just says discussed.
So, but, okay, but I, I wondered what that, what, what you were meaning by it.
So my whole concept of transparency is, we should record these meetings so that people can see what happens here, right? Because when we leave here, there's, there might be a lot of he said, she said, or we said, they said, right? Um, and the recording would, would help with that, right? Um, the one piece of transparent documentation that actually comes out of these meetings right now is the minutes. And the minutes don't reflect what really happened here at the meeting.
But with minutes, what you have to record for minutes is motions, et cetera. There would be nothing that would be better than being here in the room, these meetings are always open.
I agree.
Um, the other thing I want to say on those ARPA funds, were you saying that you didn't agree with how we were spending it?
Oh, no, I think you spent it just fine, the only thing is that I think everyone should have the ability to see that this is what those funds were being used for, you say you're gonna report motions, there was a motion for each one of those allocations.
No, no, we don't have to motion for that.
There was no motion for any of those allocations.
Regardless, it's a, it, to me, it's still a transparency issue, that's why I say it, right?
But that's why I, I'm taking offense to it, because this is an open meeting, we have not been in any way hiding anything. We didn't hide the fact that we gave the fire department ninety thousand dollars of those ARPA funds. We have literally, this is an open meeting, so for you to say it's not transparent, that isn't fair, that's not fair and accurate.
Well, I, I, we'll agree to disagree, but I don't think that, I, I think the minutes need work, that's my, that's my opinion, and I'm entitled to that opinion. I think the minutes don't reflect the actual business that happens here, they, they show that, hey, we have this as a discussion, and I'm not knocking the minute taker here at all, right? You guys approve the minutes, and to have the minutes be as vague as possible is.
That isn't what goes on.
Yeah, we'll agree to disagree.
That is not, go ahead.
Uh, like you just said, it's no beneath, if people really want and are interested, they should be sitting here.
I agree.
I have no problem with recording it.
And I really don't think that our intention is not to be transparent, I really feel that this board is very transparent.
That's right.
Well, I, I wish.
People may feel different, and that's fine, but I really do think, I'm the new guy, I really do think this is a transparent board. We're an open book, it's open here.
Well, I, I agree, I, I agree that it's open.
And there's been, I would, to be honest with you, when we talk about recording, I wish there was some recording, because some of you guys' behavior
Yeah, I would agree.
has not been very professional at all.
Yes.
Sure.
And you can agree with that.
I absolutely can.
Alright, do we have anything else, anything? And everybody's good, move on? Alright. Fire chief report.
I called about the truck, two oh three again today, it is not looking good. They're still, they're still talking about searching out parts for the pump, they're trying to decide what it is, especially after they rebuilt it, how they're gonna go about that.
What does that mean? They've already rebuilt it?
No, no, they're looking, they're chasing parts to, to, to rebuild it, but
Oh, I was gonna say, wow.
Uh, it didn't go to the spring shop before they pulled the pump out of it, so that has, still has to be done, they haven't built a subframe, there's not much going on with that truck.
Okay, um.
We did go look at the other truck we talked about in Scally again.
Yeah, and I, I think, um, I don't know if anybody else on the board, we talked a little bit, but I don't think we want the liability. There will be, there, there's enough mutual aid people around us, I don't think that we need the liability for borrow truck right now. Because we've had, you know, we've had some, um, issues, um, and I, I don't know if you guys had to add anything to that, did you wanna add anything?
Was Jacob looking at the insurance, was there any issue too?
Well, it was the liability more than anything that, if something should go wrong on it, if it was an accident, all that, so, especially.
That's what they make insurance for.
What's that?
That's what they make insurance for. And as far as, I, I get it, I, but we, we've talked also, I totally get what you're saying.
Like we've got.
We, I called them today again to make sure, I said, look, you know, can we kind of discuss if, what ifs, some what ifs, he said, yeah. You know, he said, write them down, and, uh, we'll go through it. And it, it's a tech school, basically, that owns a truck apparently, and they said, they'll, they'll sign whatever we want, I guess, but.
Do you want to add anything to that?
I guess I'll let you see the document. I mean.
Did you wanna add anything, or no, we?
Uh, so, main municipal hasn't provided a final quote on the insurance.
Right.
It's gonna be in the ballpark of around a thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Um, anybody's guess how long we won't have that truck, and how long would be allowed to borrow it?
Well, they were talking a couple months when we talked to them.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it's supposed to go to another tech school that is, isn't even developed yet, so, um, so I hear.
That's good news, isn't it?
Yeah.
I can get with the chief if you'd be interested, and we could kind of license stuff out and run it by them as far as.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think the big concern is wear and tear of stuff.
What if you lose a motor, for instance?
Something major, absolutely. Right.
That's, that's a big deal, I need, could be fifteen thousand dollars.
Absolutely. Totally agree.
Well, and are we going to have to upgrade that so that we don't have it being called in to inspect it, if there's something wrong? Um, if it blows a brake line, is the state police gonna have to come in and we're gonna have to replace all those brake lines? That's my question, that's, that's my liability issue.
Well, to be honest with you, the truck needs an inspection right now, so that would have to be done right now to run it at all, so somebody's gonna have to be under it.
Right. And so then, that, that says to me, anything that's wrong with it is going to be on us to fix it.
I, I, we don't know, I mean, we don't have it yet, so I don't think.
But we can, we can look at it when.
We can discuss that part.
It might be worth renting it for a nominal fee on the contingency that they get it inspected and, and do all that.
Right, that, that would be, because that puts it on them, you know what I'm saying? I'm not, I'm not trying to be.
No, I do, I get it.
But that is just, that liability is a scary thing for me.
Yep, for sure.
Did I, were you good, did you have anything else, okay.
I am.
Town manager report.
Okay, uh, so we finished most of the year-end activities, um. Trio has been having, I don't have a written report tonight, uh, Trio's been having a lot of issues, uh, so we've been working through that. Uh, payroll company's been having some issues, uh, fair amount of time working on that. Uh, coming up, staff is gonna be doing training on general assistance administration, that'll be coming up next week. We scattered work on the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five town report. And I did have an impromptu meeting with some people from Maine DOT, they stopped at the office, they're working on an initiative to revitalize rural downtowns.
Wow.
And they're probably gonna come back in a couple months to do a five to ten minute pitch for the board.
What does that entail?
Uh, a lot of it, I think, is gonna be work to make the roadways more pedestrian friendly.
Good, we could use that.
And they'd be looking for a buy-in from the town too, so they'll try and make the pitch for that.
Okay.
And just for your information, I gave you, uh, some updated numbers for excise collections, uh, revenue sharing, uncollected property taxes from twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. And the county and solid waste budgets as well.
Oh, but you were, you were spot on with the county going up, what you thought, you were right.
Uh, it was a little bit less than what I thought.
But thank goodness you thought ahead. That would have.
Hopefully next year it's.
Yeah.
A small increase.
Maybe, that's terrifying, nine point six five. But everything else looks pretty good. Ooh, that one's really good. Alright, then, we'll wait on that. You good?
Yep.
Alright, twenty twenty-five budget. This one.
Should be papered for.
The arch.
Uh, no.
Just lock Chris out.
So we're looking at wanting to have the warrant complete by mid-February, if we'll guess.
Uh-huh.
Um, I know everybody's had a chance to look at the budget a little bit before, um. Is there anything that's sticking out right now that anyone feels like requires further discussion? Uh, obviously the fire, EMS, but, um, roads, anything like that? Maybe in two weeks, we can review wages, uh, and fill in that portion of it. Most things are relatively stable, uh, code enforcement, animal control, uh.
How come we didn't have, oh, never mind, it's just a different one, that'd be a clean chart, so.
Oh.
Okay, that makes sense.
And the, the big item, I think we've talked about it before, next year is going to be the filing contract.
Yes.
Runs out, so we'll have to renegotiate that.
Did we, did we have the, uh, doing the sides of roads, the cutting?
Uh.
Is that the tenth?
I think so, yes.
Oh, it's gonna be, yeah, we did talk about that, yes.
Yeah, you increased that, up to ten thousand.
Okay, that's the one.
Five hundred dollars don't buy much for signs anymore, does it?
No. Not a weekend when they're out stealing them, then we're really in trouble. Alright, that. All right, that. That county one is bad.
Well, that's not a bad number.
Well, it's a bad increase.
Twenty-two overall, that's a bad number.
It's a bad increase.
And that number might fluctuate a little bit because the, the valuations aren't in. So our share of that might go up or down a little bit, but I think that's a pretty good ballpark number. Notice on the recreation line, I did remove the five thousand dollar allocation for
Right.
The pledges that they requested because you
Yep.
authorized that through our.
What happens to the concessions that they sell? Where, where does that go?
The concessions? I'm not a hundred percent sure because I haven't done it this year.
Or they didn't do it this year at all?
They didn't, no. But my understanding is that it goes
Exactly.
To offset the
I'd agree.
cost of the rent.
It just goes back in?
Yeah.
Well, and I don't think they even opened the concessions this year. I think they did, but I don't think they ever opened the building because I think.
I don't think they did, did somebody mention that? And I told all the payments that were made for that. And I think the purchase was for a, like a cookout they did at the end of the baseball season.
Oh, to feed the teams?
Yeah.
So it just rolls right back?
Yeah.
I was just telling Jen, if I reserve, if it was in that, that three town, then the sixty thousand dollar raise for that, we wouldn't have to raise it, that would come out of that.
But we'd still have to have a reserve because we're still gonna have to.
No.
We'll still have to replace those vehicles.
No, that, they all be done through the, through the three, through the three towns.
Right, because that would come out of the nine hundred and six.
I'm saying that would be, that'd be a different, that'd be a different reserve, but I mean.
Ah, I see what you're saying, that would come out of the nine hundred and six.
Other, other advantage is that, the other one he can back out that goes into play. It isn't just a solid number like that.
It doesn't just add to it, some of it.
Right, some is gonna subtract.
Exactly. All right, now look at that one. I don't see anything, all right, did you guys see anything?
So are we?
That don't count yet?
Oh, that's the total? To do the, uh, the libraries, gonna be the books.
Which one do I, library?
The books and the fourteen, uh.
Yeah.
To cover the library.
Offering expenses, yeah.
And that's the total that was recommended by the budget?
Right.
Right.
Yep, I don't, did you see anything?
No, I. So the only item I think that's really left outstanding is EMS. Got a separate sheet that has the fire department request on it.
Yep.
And then I worked out some numbers for the other options. Based on the number of calls.
Yeah.
So which, do my readings right, this budget here reflects the twenty, uh, the twenty-four hour day coverage?
Yes, this has the fire department request.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right. So. Yeah, that's part of the.
Twenty-two percent?
Two point, yeah.
Yeah.
So beside the workman, the workers' comp, it has the ten point six. So we only pay out workers' comp on actual costs. So we, we don't pay. We, we don't have to pay out on the total amount of on-call. Do you see what I'm trying to add?
My understanding from talking to them is that we do.
We pay on on-call and.
On all of the wages.
That's what I thought.
Because if someone, whatever they're doing when they're on-call could be construed as being done for the town. So if someone was to get in a car accident or.
So we pay workers' comp twenty-four seven, right now.
Yes. So.
Go ahead.
Going through this, uh. What came out of the budget committee select board workshop was an interest in exploring options two and three, basically, were.
And having the hard options. Do you have an extra copy so Wendell can see that from the budget call?
Uh.
I think.
I can.
That's all right, don't worry about it.
No, I, I can make a couple copies, okay?
Just because, um. You gonna put this one in hers?
I just put the two papers, the month.
Oh, yeah. But then that way, cause, um, that way Wendell could see.
What's the medical, what's the medical directive?
Medical director, yeah. Cause we have to do.
Hey Jason, that, that number, that includes supplies to
Oh, no, they're looking at that other sheet here. Looking at.
About one point eight million, did that include all the, all the supplies and stuff that just amounted out?
This is what we put up to the.
One point two million?
No, one point eight for the, for the three towns.
Uh, uh. Two point eight, yeah, that would be supplies, the trucks, the fire chief, everything.
Two point eight, I'm sorry, two point eight. I mean, that, like I said, there's a lot of takeaways on that for the other.
Yep.
Oh, makeup.
This board we can say, we go with this one.
Yeah, that's what needs to.
Do you think it's covered pretty good?
I think we should. Well, he doesn't wanna do the warrant until.
Thank you.
That, we're not gonna do it without the sure thing.
I can do it.
Yeah. But it's nice to have this because it's hard numbers. Like before we were doing on our phone and trying to think. Thank you very much.
Yeah, um. So again, it's kind of a step in the dark on the number of calls.
So how did that go up to a goal of a hundred and twelve? How did, how did option two go up to a hundred and twelve?
Uh, so that one would be with four hundred.
See the difference in all hours?
Calls, yeah.
See, it was four hundred calls.
Oh.
He was doing it so that he could show either two hundred or three or four hundred.
Yeah, so it really would depend on the number of calls that were.
See how you have option two has two hundred, three hundred and four hundred.
Yeah, that's what we talked about last week.
Can you talk about, okay.
And, uh, so the wages obviously were totally dependent on hours worked. On the equipment side, I took the initial request and prorated some of them. Some of them, the, the state license, medical director, training are, are gonna be fixed regardless. Fuel cost and supplies are gonna be the biggest variables there.
And did we decide we wanted to go with a, um, we, we obviously have to list the entire bill. But did we wanna go with, um, thirty-three percent, um, an option that says maybe we'll get back thirty-three percent? Is that what we decided on for data? Jason, was that what we had for bills paid thirty-three percent of what was billed?
Last time I, last time I looked, it was, you were at thirty-seven percent collection of what we had billed out. That's only a co, a month or two worth of data, though. We hadn't collected anything for November yet, when I looked at, November started to come in.
But when, when we talked about it originally, you said over the past year, that was a kind of, obviously not us, but.
I, I think thirty percent would be a safe number to use as
Thirty, thirty percent.
As, as what you're, what you could expect to see back, hopefully it would be more. If I was trying to be ultra-conservative and say, hey, we, we need to see how this goes, I would say, don't count on any of it. And then see how, see how it goes and then make a real decision on it next year. If you were to do that, you would still be able to use the money that came in up until taxes were committed.
Exactly. That's what I'm thinking, yes.
So it wouldn't have to be true zero.
Right, and that way, if we end up, if another COVID hits and we end up with a lot more hours, we would have that to fall back on. And we wouldn't be up short, is what my worry is. Because when COVID hit, we ended up with. All right, so. All right, so we will, we're gonna wait until Roseanne's here, I know, uh, next meeting is.
Twenty.
Okay.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
No. Twenty-sixth, no, Sunday.
The twenty-third.
We're not gonna be here on Sunday, we're not. Twenty-third. All right. Does that work for you? As long as you make that decision or not?
It does, do you, and I wouldn't be opposed if you feel like you might need a special.
We do, yes. I'm glad you're not opposed, cause I was gonna wait.
To schedule that sooner or later.
Yeah, that, that would be, that would be a really good idea. Um, what works? For a special meeting to go over this, what works for you?
I can do pretty much anytime, I think comprehensive plan has got this from tied up.
Wednesday, Thursday.
Other Thursday.
Yeah, have you, every, this room starts every Thursday, so.
Yeah.
Tuesday, Wednesday be open night, either one.
Next week, Tuesday, Wednesday work?
Tomorrow's Friday.
Well, yeah, we don't have time to post it, to do it next week, so it.
Oh, right, you're right, sorry.
Would be.
But then the two days I use the money, I have for it.
Yeah, yeah, Wednesday is usually my best day, so.
Yeah, so on the twenty-first.
That would be.
Okay, the twenty-second is a Wednesday, solid waste is in here that day.
Twenty-first?
Yeah, Tuesday the twenty-first.
Yep, that works. I'm gonna put my phone up now.
Works out.
Six?
Yep.
Oh, that's, okay. Is that okay with you, Jen? Yeah, it's a day after holiday, so America's happy about it, comes, comes in looking wild.
All right, so I'll get that posted workshop on, correct?
Yes.
We'll put all those welcome.
We'll get it on the assignment website.
Right. All right, then. Is that all good there, did we have more on that?
Uh.
Okay.
Yeah, we can wait until the workshop and hopefully have it up there.
All right, that will work. On the twenty-first. Oh, yeah, twenty-third, twenty-fifth. New business, twenty twenty-five appointments.
Uh, this is just the standard form you do every year. One is treasurer, down is tax collector and clerk. And then all of us is, is deputies. And that, code enforcement, animal control, everything else. Probably for motion on that. People on that list, you want some people on that list?
The appointments, twenty twenty. Yep, I second it, all in favor? Did you want to discuss it? Oh, I did, I.
I'm trying to say, you're too quick, you're too quick, I was trying to say.
My patience.
I'm sitting between you though.
I know. Roseanne's not here, give me the look, it says. I know, I know, that's why she does it. There you go. Now, twenty twenty-three audit report.
Yeah, now we're to twenty twenty-five.
Yes, I know.
Everybody's got a copy of that. They didn't raise any, any issues that need to be addressed. No, no red flags, but
go ahead.
Pro, so let me know if you'd like to have them come do a presentation on it, I'll see if we can arrange it.
So we're good.
I'm sure we'll remember what happened a year ago.
We're good.
They have already started the twenty twenty-four audit, so hopefully that's gonna be over.
Have it before.
Twenty-four, twenty-six?
January of twenty-sixth.
And just so late, it's.
Yeah, I'm.
Late reading, yes.
Well, do you even remember any of it?
That's what I'm saying.
All right, review and sign warrants fifty-three, fifty-four and one and two.
Make a motion, maybe.
So there was an error actually on that, there is no fifty-four.
No, fifty-four. Don't, don't bullshit.
Just fifty-three, one and two.
I was gonna say, I thought it was.
All right, review and sign warrant fifty-three and one and two.
Make a motion, maybe, yeah.
I second it. Any discussion? No discussion at all? All in favor? All right, road commissioner information, we've had no road issues that I know of in the last two weeks.
Can I complain about other roads that I can't?
You can, I mean, we have the best roads anywhere, honestly.
I was wondering if we could get, uh, Jason to, maybe it's not a job, but when he found the post office onto the Morrison Avenue? There's that deep hole?
I don't know who, uh, Stuart keeps threatening to fill it in, I keep hoping he does.
So could we have Jason fill that for?
One in front of the fire station, he can do all he does, yours.
So I don't know.
Well, that's gonna be hot talk, doesn't it?
Yeah, it should be.
We don't, obviously the post office doesn't own the building. So, but I don't know, cause it's really not in the roadway.
It's on the side of the road.
But it's washing away more and more. I feel it's a little self-serving if I was to make a motion to have him do it. But, um, have you seen it? It would swallow a smoke.
Say, I get it every freaking time.
Yes, same.
That's a, that's awful. You get it every time, and that's awful.
But it is how you turn.
First time this one.
But it is, how you turn it on.
Yeah, it's like that mine.
But it's gonna hurt, it's gonna do damage to the
Yeah, because it's washing away more and more.
Well, it is, yeah.
Yeah, so, and we have one in front of that, but that's state road.
Yeah, probably.
That's gonna be hot talked to.
That was a question of
So
Point being, point being
Could you, could you call the post offices?
We we could, we could, we could put a little bit of gravel in the temporary mark, yeah.
Oh, anything would be better than nothing right now.
Just saying, if he, if he drops some off down there
Yeah. Yeah.
That would be better than nothing, you know, you always jump, they don't think that much.
Or you take a tugboat nap.
They'll blow out anyway, man.
Big, um, is that what you wanna do?
Well, no, I'm not brought to the board, see if
I know, but I feel like I shouldn't say anything, because obviously you're just self-serving.
Well, I you, I, I think it'd be a good move.
I make a motion to the town.
I don't, I don't think we need a motion.
It's gonna protect, it's gonna protect our road.
No, we don't need a motion. Okay, let's do that.
It's protecting our road, that's what it's done.
So just ask Jason to fix it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would make all of us happy. Thank you, I, do you want me to call him, or do you want to?
If you want to, that's fine.
Okay. No, I want you to, because it'll look like I'm gonna say, hey.
No, I forget that.
Sorry, I just thought of that, Jake's gonna be like, you want me to
I was gonna say, I'll call him.
Been that way a long time, too.
When I call Jake, Jake goes, why am I like this?
He's a D for all of them. Well, I was gonna bring up some gravel, but I used all my gravel down on my delves, you been up by there?
Yes. Are you supporting it? I'm supporting it, but I don't think we need a motion for it, it's funny part.
Okay, okay, so I'm taking your motion, your rebuttal.
She kicked your motion out. I don't think we need a motion to have Jake fix it, it's just one of them, but I like that you're on it, so that I'm not forgetting.
Okay.
All right, municipal officer input. Does anybody have anything, Roseanne's not here, she
How much does it cost, uh, pearl light for on our house? If we, if we put another light on?
The streetlight?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Where do you want to put it?
Well, I can't remember, I don't even know, because you, when they asked to put one down at the four corners where Hudson Hill Road and
Oh.
there, and it's on that side of the road, but there's a pole up that road just a little bit, I think, it's quite a dark hole there.
It is dark.
I was wondering if we could put a light on that pole, even though it's not out on fifteen.
But the other thing you have to be careful, is that in Kennesaw Gate or is that in Corinth? Is it, which side of the road is it on?
No, don't matter, right, right there.
I think right there it would be in Corinth.
Cause the first, first house on that little road on the back, on that little street is in Corinth.
Right.
That has got, that has got, yeah, has got on Oak Street to to post the road.
On Oak Street, isn't it? Oh.
That's how we knew.
It's so dark up there, same thing on the Hudson.
All right, so if we check into it, then we can see if it's feasible.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if it's crazy mild, it's
Well, probably crazy mild, just.
But that is kind of one of those, we've had a couple citizens that called about it.
I don't know that it would actually light up the intersection itself.
Yeah.
But when you turn on that road, it's gonna some light that there's a road, it's, it's just so dark.
Okay. Yeah.
And same thing on the Hudson, Hudson Road here, you turn on it, it's all pitch dark, so I didn't know if, I didn't know how expensive they were.
I don't go up that, they won't.
All right, do we have anything else?
No.
Nope, no, no, all right, I guess we have
Motion to a jan?
No, it's nice to try them. You see?
Oh, yeah, a question.
Oh, go ahead.
From Mark, but you were supposed to take that back to the, your people to, to see what they thought about the options, do you know when you're gonna be able to give us that, that information?
I'll get back to you, Your Honor. I've got some opinions, but it's just verbal.
Yep.
Okay. I'll get back to you, but.
Good?
Huh?
Yeah, go ahead.
I make motion, we go in executive session. Personal issues, one MRSA. Four oh five.
And the others two. We have all the others two. We have the general assistance one and the poverty evictions one.
Whoa, we do.
Right, we have all three, yes.
No.
Oh.
I think we just had first.
General assistance though, right?
No, no, just the, uh
Oh. Never mind, I thought we had a
Yeah, should be four oh five, six A.
Okay, perfect.
Six A?
Yeah.
With Mac, half by chief, one. Ben?
I second it. Anybody have a discussion on it? All in favor? Bingo. Yeah, I was thinking that, I thought we had a general assistance, but I didn't think that.
No, 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 don't, see ya.